Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the special meeting. Thank you all for being here. October sixth, twenty twenty-five, and I will call it to order. And roll call please.
Here.
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 Here. Here. Please join me for a round of applause. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so right into the awards time, our spirit awards.
I have a wonderful partner in here because we have this many awards to give out, which is awesome because we like seeing that and we like seeing that our kiddos, despite what you hear, that oh, kids nowadays, no, kids nowadays are awesome. And we like to celebrate them, so. I have a helper who's going to help me with names and pronouncing the names. I, you know, messed up on those. But if you didn't know what a spirit award is, this is a spirit award. And it's a monthly award that honors Sands Springs Public Schools students and patrons who come on above expectations while representing Sands Springs Public Schools throughout the current or previous school year. And Mr. Roder is the one who nominated all of these wonderful spirit awards.
He's at a conference, he's up here.
So let's go. Kiddos up here and hand their awards and I'll read this.
So I'm gonna make a comment about the tropical smoothie cards that you're handing out to these students. Those were donated.
Oh.
The tropical smoothies.
Do you take donations?
No, the actual cards wasn't donated, but the coupon.
The coupon is donated. Anyway, that was a pretty special thing.
Well, I thought we'd give them up here.
Yeah, okay. We just need to get these things up here. They're all written down real fast. Gary Oliver, and I misspelled her name, it was crazy as fuck because she was... Gary Oliver, Tashia Edwards, Kinley, Laura Bro, Summer Bennett, Riley Walberg, Corbin Rivers, Candy Carey, Ryan Lee, J.K. Speck, Creedence Davis, Jayden Stikes, Ian Williams, Morgan McCorr, Alex Eckelman, Kate Rodriguez, Todd Bennett, Hunter Douglas, Ben White, Caitlin Luce, Megan Whitford, Will Tough, Oliver Frampton, Jane Quirco, and Adrienne Ellis.
So, good, it's been a long time. We'll make sure to leave you a reward in there.
Okay.
Sounds good. I would mention we also have some page having a teacher's certificate.
Oh, yes, well, come on up.
I love all these. Get into the extras.
I don't think there's extras.
Let me explain what these people are here. What we're doing is we're giving a standout award. I'm reading what it says on it. Sands Springs Public Schools certificate has the name on it for outstanding achievements and accomplished in Sands Springs Public Schools student community partner. And we quote on the bottom that this is kind of a motto, challenge minds, fire hearts, empower the community learners. And what these kiddos did, I'm reading what Jay wrote down. He says, "This group of students spent the day cleaning up around the campus. They hauled limbs, pulled weeds, and picked up trash. The group of students tackled a massive project and with teamwork and hard work, they were able to make a huge difference." And I can tell you that being a community member and with all the construction activity that's going on around the campus and the mutual, and it's easy to forget what things look like and just kind of let it go. When we see a group of students with an initiative that says, "We want our place to look good. We want to see what we can do to go out and make it look really good." So, you took it upon yourself and you did that. I'm gonna pass these out to you. And I would ask one of the teachers if they want to say something about these kiddos and stuff and what they did and...
I would love to. This is our core group of students. Anytime we need anything, they're there. They do anything we ask. Normally, before we even ask and before we know we need something done, they're there going, "What can we do? Can we do this to help you?" So, thank you, students. I can't tell you how many things they do around the school. If we need trash taken out, they're there. If, obviously, clean up around the school grounds, they're there. My microwave died the other day and a cake took it out to the trash for me. Just whatever we need, they're there. I would also like to say thank you to Mr. Roder because he leads by example. Whatever needs to be done, he's right there. He's willing to do it. Nothing bothers him cleaning up, you know, the school grounds. He was there with you guys. Softened toilets. He's there. He does what needs to be done. No questions asked. So, thank you guys for always being there and helping and kind of reading our minds. And sometimes it's kind of hard to do.
So, I gotta add, because if you had driven by, not only, you say cleanup, but there, it involved a trailer from our maintenance department parked in front of the school, pulled by truck to deliver limbs. So, I don't know where you take limbs, Chris, but nonetheless, yeah, it was a major cleanup. It wasn't just we picked up trash. It was some hard messwork. And so, with a smile, like, they were pretty excited about it. And as you all know, Paige was getting ready to get a little bit of a facelift, which is sorely needed. And then we got to this one hundred or so. So, good job, you guys. You have no idea. Mr. Roder's actually watching online, texting me, and said, "And watch all now." How proud he is of you.
I want to add one thing in my pay because we as board members get applied into a lot of different things. We get to participate in a lot of things. One of my personal favorite things I get to each year is go through the Page Academy graduation ceremony. It's just special. And so, I look forward to that in May. I want to see all you guys there. And we'll get up on the stage, we'll come across the stage, get your awards and all that stuff. And that's just really cool. So, thank you for what you do. Y'all does, y'all are excellent.
We appreciate you. I don't want you to ever know, so good job. I would also like to say thank you to our superintendent, our board. You guys have always supported us without hesitation. And we thank you for that.
They're pretty amazing. So, you guys are awesome. I'm sure there's more in time, you guys.
All right. Oh, perfect. All right. One, two, three.
Hang on, please. We have two students that are always small in. And, um, Caitlin, if you could... Can you have her up?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for helping out and doing what you did. We appreciate all your hard work and dedication to your school. Okay. One, two, three. One more. Congratulations, guys. Well, you saw it. Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
Yes.
Do you want the whole group?
No, we'll just get...
Okay, come on, come on.
So you have it. One, two, three. One, two, three.
I'm going to give the Page Center Awards. And if I could have Cynthia Meadows and Eric Anderson up there. And so, the Page Center Award is not only the spirit award, except it's for faculty and staff. It's for those that go above the expectation while representing Sands Springs Public Schools in their current or previous school year. So. Eric said, "I would like to nominate Cynthia Meadows for the Page Center Award. Cynthia is one of our special needs bus drivers. She cares so much for the children out of her care. I wish I could give specifics about a recent crisis and situation that she handled involving some students from our district. But just know that she took the time to ensure that students were safe and were reunited with the park guardian. And we all know how important it is for our children to get with the right person at their school. She is always smiling, enjoys what she does, and brings positive attitude to the students on her bus and to our bus barn. I think she embodies the spirit of the Page Center Award and is definitely deserving. We are so glad to have her on our team, in our department, and as part of our transportation team. I don't think people realize how adaptable any of the staff has to be. And so, we are thankful for you and we wish you luck."
I wish, I wish you guys knew what it was that she was being nominated for this award. It was one of those stressful situations and she had about thirty minutes with these students on the bus, got them reunited with the school, and it was just really neat watching you and her both handle that situation. So, thank you very much.
One, two, three. Thank you. Good job.
One more Page Center Award. Ms. Caitlin Milton, if you will join me. Ms. Milton was nominated by Carrie Schleiver, and I am going to read what she wrote first. Caitlin recently started her second year as our district-wide prevention coordinator, formerly drug-free school coordinator, through the opioid abatement grant we received from Oklahoma Attorney General's office. This position was brand new to us last year, and Caitlin took the initiative to research, network, and collaborate with individuals and organizations across the state to implement this program. She recently presented with Dr. Marsha Heron, OSSCA Director of Student Organizational Success, at the OSSCA Posta Leadership Conference. She is also presenting to the Oklahoma Legislature next week with Dr. Heron on an interim study on chronic absenteeism. She will speak on our WOR program, suspension reduction practices, tiered intervention, and other supports. Supports we provide students to ensure they come to school. Caitlin is the perfect person for this position. She is passionate about students and their success at school. She knows that prevention and intervention are necessary to overcome huge barriers to the success of many of our students. Excuse me. Our students and staff benefit greatly from the time, care, and enthusiasm she pours into this program. Absolutely. Um, I had the privilege of listening to her presentation at the OSSCA conference. This, it was in August, just last month. And it was amazing. Sometimes in our positions, we know what people do, but we don't know what people do. And that's kind of where Ms. Milton fell for me. And so, my daughter actually was in, freshman last year, did have the chance to be a part of your program. Her, get taught. And anyway, she was just like, "That was so cool." And she talked about you and she loved it. And, I mean, I talk about a lot of stuff, but that's, I mean, it's a pretty big deal to hear her say that. So, anyways, it is my privilege, my honor, to be able to award you this award. So, thank you.
Oh, no, no, that's what I already said.
She did great. She was great. Great fun.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, back to the awards part of the meeting. And if you would like, you're welcome to head out, but this is going to get into the business part of it.
Thank you for coming.
We appreciate you guys for coming. So, that was, everybody joined with the exception of Caitlin, who has a room five. We talked about student enrollment, and so, we shifted from what our conference speakers are a sentiment of, hey, we're gonna go ahead and cast a good edition of the faculty from the spring. But Caitlin's gonna share some of her presentation that she did at OSSCA and maybe elaborate on the question. So Caitlin, I'll let you come over and improve the... I think the presentation is up there.
Um, okay, so I'm Caitlin Milton, the sacred drug-free school coordinator. Um, this is, was purchased with opioid abatement grant funds. So, thank you to Carrie Schleiver for providing that. And to the board members who are alive with this opportunity. It's been an incredible experience for me. Um, with this program, it was created with the, like, culture of the school environment. So, we wanted a culture of wellness, action, resilience, and purpose, which takes kind of Tim Ray's suspension reduction piece and expands it to a comprehensive pre-K through twelve prevention and intervention program. Um, one of the first things that I did when I started was, what do we have? So, I created a tiered intervention menu, essentially. And this menu has been, you know, added to a little bit of time. But it's what we see in education. We're used to seeing that intervention model. And seeing this is kind of translating that wellness piece into what we see in education. So, we have a pretty hefty list here, expansive list here of options, supports that we have for our students. Um, the prevention side of what I do is in the classroom. So, um, or like a campaign for the district flag, which really had some decisions happening in October. Last year, I put out some, um, like, social media flyers and created I sessions. This year, my focus is getting into the elementary schools. So, I'll be teaching at every elementary school at some point this year, some sort of life skills, prevention. Um, last year, starting with the school year twenty-four, twenty-five, between Garfield, they let me pilot this program there at their school. Between Garfield and then the freshman academy and high school, um, I know for a fact that over six hundred students, different students have received some sort of evidence-based prevention because I was able to do that with them individually. Um, and then that was with the BOP life skills for the freshmen, which I, um, so we just did. Um, and then this year, by the end of this school year, a freshman class coming up, and then expanding to all elementary schools. I know at least fourteen hundred different students will have received prevention, evidence-based prevention education. Um, I also bought a Donut Choose grant at the beginning of the year last year to turn off the space into a home center. Um, I have those weekly I sessions in there where we de-stress, we talk, we don't talk, we use manipulatives. And I know that at least seventy different students have utilized that space already this school year. So, just in the last seven weeks. I also maintain an open door policy for walk-ins, self-referrals, just kids that need to talk or need a quiet place to go during the school day. Um, the intervention piece, this is the suspension reduction piece. Um, we, I transitioned that from the admin and kind of took that off their plate last year. And so, it'll be twenty-four students to the WOR program. With monthly follow-ups in place, only four of those students had a reoffense that resulted in a full forty-five day suspension. Um, we're our pre- and post-assessments with this program. So, I'm getting that data feedback, that program feedback. Um, I created a goal-setting worksheet for counselors and admin to follow up so they're all on the same page with every individual student that comes to this program. And then we also, with grant funds, bought items for quick kits, which teaches kids how to put healthy skills in place of unhealthy habits. Um, and then for this year, I have expanded that WOR program to five a week. So, now we offer the WOR, the suspension reduction program, six through twelve, to all of those students. Um, six five-week kits already participated in that this year. Um, like we said earlier, I presented at the conference at OSSCA in Oklahoma City, and then I'll be talking to the legislature in a couple of weeks. Um, we have formed a secondary prevention committee for all secondary sites, virtual academy, Page Academy included. Um, and then we'll do a rebrand with this program, and a rebrand, staff will understand how to execute behavior training for a teacher coworker. So, we're bringing in, building more and more for this program. Okay, I'd love to talk about our program with anyone who will listen. So, if anyone has questions, concerns, comments, I'd like to chat. They never hesitate to reach out to me, but I appreciate all of you guys for giving me this opportunity. to reach out to me, but I appreciate all of you guys for giving me this opportunity.
If you have questions, please give me answers. It's, 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 it's for us. What's cool about it is we're reaching kids that maybe didn't get reached. Of course, the idea of recognition, be honest, because we know, you know, we make it all the things, but really it was more about getting kids that were most at risk. And I actually put a chamber presentation together and talked about how, as a team, we decided to really focus on getting kids at risk, that the ones that we may not reach despite early interventions in schools, Kaitlyn's a big part of that. Jake had no idea what he still wanted to be, is that we were asked to present at an interim study of legislature as well, in addition to Kaitlyn, just talking about making sure, just like if you want to know how we're getting in, the kids that sometimes lose because of things in their lives, situations that maybe they're outside of their ability to overcome, and so it's been a lot of fun. Watch Kaitlyn do her thing, but then also really for us as a district team, to the kids that need the most security somewhere, I'm sure she could probably add to that.
Well, I think for me, one of the biggest pieces is, if you want to look at the correlation between a forty-five day suspension and a dropout rate, it is so high, and so for Kaitlyn to be able to provide them really intensive services and have some expectations for them to make sure that when they're coming back to school, that she's checking in and that they have goals that they have to meet and, and things that they have to follow through with, and then they're back in school in ten days instead of home for forty-five days doing zero work and getting zero instruction, even if we're sending all of that work. Um, it's just such a huge game changer, and those students now, particularly now in middle school, is going to be a huge change too, because I can assure you, if you have a forty-five day suspension in middle school, it's probably a ninety percent chance that they end up being dropped out. And so she's making a huge, huge difference in the lives of, of those students.
The repeated gender rate, that they, I mean, twenty-four is a pretty low number in my opinion, for a high school, to be honest, for a forty-five day suspension, but you only have four to come back and actually have one later, because of repeated agents. That's, that's, that's great. We want zero coming back, but the fact that we're down a door is incredible. So I'm like, if you have questions with Kaitlyn, I'll just leave her left without asking.
They've heard you once.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Maybe is that a ladder? Where is it that it has, that says that forty-five days is the age that we should be using?
Yeah, so forty-five days probably really comes from law, to be honest, and we started thinking about, like, especially in case you're impacted by forty-five, so forty-five would be, you know, not going to period, it's a poor, I don't know, it's just a magical amount, it's just kind of verbiage of law. There are occasions, to be honest, that it probably isn't, in cases where safety puts kids at risk at school, that's just viable, but for kids that really just need some, some type of, then there's no magical about forty-five days really, you know, except that it was quoted in special law way back in, what, nineteen seventy-six or something like, so, that's an S R range, to be honest.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, there are some things out there, it's like, I mean, yeah, two kids
getting up the skirmish or whatever, and it's forty-five days, are you kidding me?
We definitely don't do that.
We don't do that anymore, for sure.
Used to.
Yeah. Exactly. And I credit, really, the high school team. Tim Ray was kind of the, um, I think created this idea of, well, we always return the purpose, because we know that once we send them home, if they're not going to work enough, and you have them, we're not training them behaviorally, how to respect others and behave as a school, and it's something they need to use to be successful, then we're not having. So that's kind of, I think, the framework, and of course, since they've gone through it years now, it was, as was ten bar too, so, um.
I think the other big piece too is the early intervention. So intervening when they're, when they're in third grade about, you know, not, not making poor life choices is going to trickle out.
Yeah. We used to, uh, bang, so let's talk about it, easy, easy kids, I mean, even littles, con words, con actions. She said, "My husband finally said, don't say those words to me." But they're really good at speaking, and they're little, you know, teaching, teaching littles and growing up, and those two components are really intimate to success. Anyway, it's like, everything I need to know, learning the kind of stuff, that you just kind of minimize, it's not rocket, it's like, we've got a teaching behind, so.
Protection.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'm going to move on to the point I made, the kind of big news under student state government, to be honest, is the entrance to our new states we're recommending, at this point, I don't understand, for the state, for the last week. And then when we feel, we're going to, um, I'm not going to hide the fact that there's a refreshing, people leaving now this morning, and not all of the schools in the state just going to say, "Hey, you're just looking at, we can be positive, we're going to teach your improvement, we're going to make them feel like they're professionals." I mean, it's just lovely to get positivity, so I think we're seeing a turn, um, I have a colleague that knows him personally, that has had really great, um, stories about the kinds of things he does, so we'll see. I mean, same time around for the state soon, and we have our, our folks at R, but just a year and three months left in a term that shifts the narrative to positivity is feeling really good, so I, I would probably, anything to talk about. Lots of things run away on the website, so, um, but it kind of shifted to positive, you can still find it, there is a link, so it's not being called red. I, I believe the criteria we use does unlinked as well, but we're still providing oversight that it feels more support versus negative, to be honest, and so we're pretty excited about it. Um, we've got two special education teachers that have qualified for the, the teacher bonus, authorized by the state department, and they should get paid soon, I think, to tune about ten thousand dollars, which is great. The other positive, Casa happened last Friday, a week ago last Friday, and one of the newly appointed state organization members, I don't even try to say his last name, was in attendance, and just there listening on the talk, and so he was quick to ask some questions. Um, I was able to present a little bit and talk about some things we were doing, um, and talk to her personally, and got a sound phone number, which is just an interesting turn of events, so, something about that. And then just in that, my evaluation side, so I had that as well. So any questions about changes? Um, okay, that's the big news, I think.
On the resource innovation. Oh, I'm sorry. What about, um, here, I don't know, again, I'm a publicist. Uh, any traction on trying to get the, uh, state to pretend to be informed instead of the, uh?
Uh, we need to think about it. I, we need to think about it, it's a really interesting article about it, to be honest. I think it worries me just a tad to take that out of my hands, people. Um, the flip side is, you get, we get elected, you know? Personally, I, I think there's a lot of talking to do about that, because I do think that there has to be a lot of expertise when you go into a position like that, like, you should know a little bit about the administrative, you know, how, how it works, you know what I mean? Like, you should know a little bit about professional development, finance, the, the government equals tax research, you know what I mean? So, I'm torn a little bit.
Well, my, my whole problem was the election, the elected part of it, the whole, the whole problem I have with that is, you have no clue what you're getting.
Right.
I mean, he's, case in point, you know? At least, at least when you have time to appoint one, whether it be, I mean, you go to school, it's going to be political, but, you know, at, at least you have someone that can, you know, take shit, hire stuff that is just, just as bad as Walter was, and all of a sudden, you go back on shit.
Right.
Can't go back on old shit, go up on whatever.
Yeah. I think, for any mind-made company, I think the biggest emphasis to success in that position is qualification criteria, you know what I mean? And so right now, thirty-one, and, you know, I'm not sure, to be honest, if the actual, if there's not any link to a certification or any kind of certification. So I think that solves the problem either way though, you know what I'm saying? So, that would be why I'm getting the WOR and the legislature.
All right.
All right. Um, I have to say that, which I guess, that's a great question, uh, any else? We've, we've sort of seen innovation, there's a picture of the, I'm playing around, and it's very released, and I'm definitely enjoying.
I gotta tell you, this makes me smile. Being needed, playing around so badly, and to see this picture makes my heart happy, so.
Long process, twenty-four long process, I think that one. And all of this project, projects are moving in very well. Um, we'll be scheduling a winter category, we still don't have the activity, if you get an opportunity and you want to call or come by, we're in the place where you can actually live in the stairs, and we can get to lower our offices by not going, you know, or around and beyond, to take theirs, that's kind of, um, boys, like, there's two straight nights, it's a huge chance to drive by night, but the doors are the, the lights, and all the things are coming along really well. Um, what we're working on for resource innovation is just the first word statistical report, I think, S N O L in the room, and so she is learning a ton, but now is, you know, we have our October one count, who's here, but now we have to get all of the weights right, and so she's working on that hard right now. Did a great job at, you know, data systems, it don't talk sometimes between ours and the S D E, not start with districts, sometimes doesn't pull data correctly, and it's a source of stress for all of us. Um, but we're saying, well, we don't see significant change in state projections, so that's all of that is good. Um, moving on, we're okay with community communication. Uh, again, state of education, this is for this chamber, we had it attached to my PowerPoint that we showed, so I'm sure you took some time to get a question, we're going to have to answer. We hosted our first coffee with cabinet appearance, a Pratt, well, we had a Pratt. A Leah K, because the only attendee at ME, however, as I say everyone, I've also been super, uh, we'll be available, there's something to be done with the questions. Just so you know, there, we've scheduled a current meeting, we'll create a appearance regarding the new way we're going to throw in their camp processes, um, so, I will have it out in the afternoon as well, and we'll be there pretty much when I'm ready to take it. That's it. Well, should I have a question? Um, the meeting agenda is attached, uh, the, the first meeting is just all of all the things that we discussed at the safety level, um, a lot of it's driven by separate calls, just making sure we're going to get safe, uh, reminders, we don't, we don't really need any standard terms, so constantly, uh, we do all of those things, safety at every school year, and then of course, you know, Kaitlyn will present it tonight. I put that in the realm of safety, just because even if you're just talking about student care and their safety in terms of drug prevention or behavioral intervention, whatever that is important, so I think you see the level and the big picture to the individual student that also is really important about safe schools, so unless you have a question, those are the two biggies. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, so I'm going to delve into, you have this new work packet, it will be the WOR meeting suggested date for, uh, two thousand twenty-six. Um, for new members that may not be quite familiar, um, we do calendar years instead of physical years, which seems super odd by law. We actually have it posted in December, so this is your first taste of what that might look like. Beth Always Goes, Nancy, training with OSSBA, and she learned this year that, um, the dates don't have to be voted on technically by the board, but if you have feedback about this, please let me know, we'll certainly adjust. The only Tuesday that we are suggesting for working will be in September, because if we delay it to the fourteenth, then you have a six-week gap before working, which is not really conducive to getting anything set, and you do it in September, so we're suggesting that to be held on the eighth of September, that's in retaliation for the naming days, so.
But is the seventh a second holiday?
Seventh is, yeah, I don't know.
What, what about the first, what was on the first?
First, it could be first. Um, the first. Uh, that's a good question. The seventh is September, this year.
It could be first, that can happen, so let's keep that, this isn't, we don't actually go.
Shall I say those were like in July next summer?
I think it's in July.
Thank you.
Yeah. For, that would be very true.
We're doing one by one, yeah. One is then by, by gap, we're just going to do them one by one, yeah, so. Is there a preference of the reverse every day for you guys?
If it's just, if it's the one or nine, what will it do? Reverse.
Reverse the line.
Reverse the line.
Maybe there's another video, there.
You bet it's one of these. It's a group.
Just.
There you go. Um, for, as far as it comes in, I do have some concern, um, just twelve, sometimes we're going to see, uh, some items under activity, uh, accounts, just some things change, so I've kind of pinned tie numbers, letter C, sanction applications for basketball association, senior celebration. Um, number fourteen, approval of payroll claims, it's October, not September, so that is in this front agenda, so if that takes advantage, we'll change that to October for you guys, and unless you actually see. I have a number twenty-two, that's the alternative education plan, that's not really a plan that you've seen before, but in just essence of recognizing students, like, two rovers killing it, that makes it bad, and he's doing so great, so I just wanted to kind of highlight that. Other than that, everything's pretty normal-ish in the WOR, working sense. Any questions?
Uh, sorry, one question. We talked earlier about the bus situation and the suburban situation.
Yes.
Did we get that straight now?
We did. I think they're, they're not, yeah, we're just doing rides, yeah.
So we're not going to have all of that?
We should have all of that. Again, concerns valid, I mean, suburbs are less safe, people can't access vehicles, but.
Depends on the driving.
Well, it's all you do. You gotta drive safely, get it right, so.
Okay, bye.
Any other questions?
My vote is for the decision.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Holmes.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Action by law, number twenty-seven, proposed executive session to discuss temporary teacher recommendations for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. Number twenty-eight, proposed approval of temporary teacher recommendations for twenty-five twenty-six year.
Permission to approve the temporary teacher recommendations for twenty-five twenty-six year.
Any discussion? Any vote, please?
Holmes.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Number twenty-nine, proposed executive session to discuss employment recommendations for twenty-five twenty-six school year. Okay, proposed approval on employment recommendations for twenty-five twenty-six year.
My vote is, I have thirty to stay.
All right.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Holmes.
Hannah.
Paul.
Aye.
Proposed executive session to convene for evaluation of superintendent.
Oh, yeah, motion, we, as a group, executive session to devalue the superintendent.
Aye.
Motion, second vote, please.
Holmes.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we are now in session. Time is eight oh nine PM. One and executive session. The board discussed the following: evaluation of district attendants, those present, where superintendent Jerky, Ms. Hamlin, Mr. Mullins, Mr. Ogwala, Ms. Soon, and myself. No other matters were discussed and no votes were taken. Okay, we can move on to number thirty-two.
So those policies that were on the board agenda last night but were refused this week. So we would have any questions you guys might have? Those are pretty simple. Student conduct was a new one and they've added some... Do you want to say anything about them?
No, I just said "da" (dae).
Oh, "dae". There you go. Unless you have questions, we would ask for approval.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies to the district policy manual A through C. A second?
Okay, motion and a second. Can we vote please?
Mullins.
Aye.
Hamlin.
Aye.
Uncle.
Aye.
Ms. Soon.
Aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.